I will call to order the Village Council Regular Meeting September 14th at 7:00 PM. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adam Clark, would you call the roll, please?
Lori Borjo, currently absent. Kelsey Cook.
Here.
Allison Kemp.
Here.
Ashley Ross.
Kirk Moran-Hellman.
Here.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
If there's no change, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for September 14th, for the 21,000 meeting.
Support. Motion made by Hellman, supported by Ross. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any nay? Motion carries. Item five is Presentation. You have none. Six, Public Hearings, there are none. And item seven is Call to the Public. Now's the time for the public to address council with any concerns. You may state your name and address if you'd like. Is there anyone who would like to speak on the public? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and move on to the Consent Agenda, 8A. Is there a motion to receive and file, item 8A?
I'll make a motion to receive and file it and consent it to item 8A.
Thank you. No support?
Support.
Motion made by Hellman, seconded by Kemp. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any nay? Motion carries. Item 8B, Approval Item. Is there a motion to approve item 8B?
If there's no changes or questions, I'll make a motion to approve. Agenda items 8B included the bills, amount of $231,153.11.
Support. Thank you. Motion made by Hellman, seconded by Ross. Roll call vote, please.
Hellman?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Borjo?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Number nine, Unfinished Full Business, A is the Exhaust Brake Ordinance, First Reading. Mr. Davis, do you want to bring council to data anything?
No, we did some additional research, which was the one-month pause because there were some growing concerns in the case law about decimal-based ordinance arising out of your noise ordinance, inability to enforce, inability to have some subjective measurements. So the prevailing thought now is what we're doing is just to make the act itself a nuisance.
We used to have one of those test for reasons.
Yeah, but it's just hard to chase the trucks around.
We used it more for like construction sites.
Yeah, so then when you go to prosecute a violation, it's very difficult for the court to establish that that was the noise. So we're going to the act itself as the nuisance itself.
You're also kind of like a PBT, that's a brush lighter?
Yeah, calibrated.
Calibrated, yeah, be trained on usage periodically and all that stuff too.
We have the necessary exceptions, the emergency exceptions, everything built into the ordinance.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from council? We do a roll call vote, please.
Kemp?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Borjo?
Yes.
Alma?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 9B is the Wackel PUD Agreement Consideration. Mr. Mador?
Unfortunately, I have nothing new to present to you tonight. It was, we worked, Kelly, Bob Davis and myself worked hard, met several times, Mr. Wackel had a good agreement put in place. I left with him Thursday, February weekend. He didn't see it in my email that it was gotten off at his office, which I did until after the weekend. He came into my office last week, I think Wednesday, discussed it. His one main concern was about some, one point that he brought up, the implications about infrastructure in the ground, and it was just thinking about how he might be compensated for that. He at that time indicated to me he was going to reach out to try to get legal interpretation from his end, because at this point, we're just the three of us, and he didn't ever have legal counsel involved. And he said he liked Bob, he liked the approach Bob took, he trusted Bob and the approach we were taking. But he indicated to me yesterday, he was meeting, he was an attorney yesterday at 2:00 PM, and I have not heard from him how that came out. I had called, he had set a meeting about 5:00 o'clock, and asked if any update. I prefer to provide something rather than nothing to council. But we did not cross paths, we did not hear from him today.
So Joe, first of all, thank you for using trust and lawyer in the same sentence. So when we sat down to draft a version of this, one of the things that I talked to Joe and Kelly about was, let's not add in too many complexities, and then let's be true to our words, Mr. Wackel, that what we have reduced to the terms would find its way into a very organized and simple agreement that reflected exactly what we talked about. So that's what we did, and we were kind of hoping that when he read it, it would be in fact what we had all discussed, because I think it is. But he has this one issue, and I'm a little concerned about timing at this point, although I do see there's continuing to do some work out there. I am concerned about timing because we're bucking up against some of the initial timeframes. So it might be wise this evening if you could approve the agreement subject to Mr. Wackel requiring changes, and then we have to bring the changes back. But I think it would be progress if you were moving forward with saying, we're good with this. Anyways, that's just my thought. And I think it'll be on the agenda for the DDA a week from yesterday.
Do you, do we know what progress has been made since we started talking to him?
Not much. He was out clearing the area and getting some excavation, coming in there to start digging down for the domestic water lines for installation. And that, I think is the extent of it. I had reached out to some other contractors I knew, doing some work for Davis and High School. They gave me three Mason contractors that provided them three, four weeks ago. One was a very large firm, but so good they couldn't do it. The other two had some interest. Kelly had been working with a Mason contractor for some work, brickwork itself in the VDA. Paige, Mason, he come in last week to talk to Kelly, she brought it up to him. Mr. Paige, Paige Mason and I walked over there, went around, talked to Dave, and phoned him while we were there. One conversation I did have with Mr. Wackel yesterday was that he did communicate with Mr. Paige, and had forwarded him the drawing and stuff, but they still hadn't reconnected since. I think that might have been last Thursday or so. That is the linchpin, I think, to any progress really going forward with the structure. Yes, he can put some domestic water lines in, he can force them in the floor in the basement, or the ground floor. But without a Mason contractor available, nothing's going to change in the physical walls of the building. So that's the linchpin that's hurting. There's other things, of course, that he could perhaps be doing, but without that.
Well, I like Mr. James' recommendation to approve. Let's also put a motion on the table and we can have further discussion. So I move that we, the council approve the agreement as currently drafted, that has been in line with the firm sheet that's already been approved by the DDA and council. And then if any, obviously, that's the extent of the approval, and if there are any changes, it would come back to council.
Agreed.
Support. Any questions?
Yeah. If we do have any changes, is this something we might need to move on quickly, such as a different separate meeting, rather than waiting for next Monday?
Could be. And perhaps even by next Monday's DDA meeting, I would like to get this week. It'd be nice to have some kind of response or attempted a slight amendment or addendum to it. It'd be nice if we didn't even get there on next Monday night, and if someone's available for them to consider next Monday, perhaps we could even do a tandem or counseling or something, I don't know. It's hard to say, because we don't have a chart giving that to us. But it'd be nice, rather than waiting, because of the timeline and the weather coming in the next 90 days, that's the biggest concern. So yeah, we would reach out, try to settle something short term if we could.
Yeah, I'd just suggest that if we need to find a date that we can wait up and keep it momentary, if something comes up.
I would hate to be here at our Cores meeting, which would be like deadline number one, and be the same position, because then, yeah.
What would happen if that was the case? Like if we don't get it signed, and the deadlines are passed?
The first deadline is October 15.
Right.
So yes, by next month, I'm not sure exactly what day it is, but right about meeting.
Then we would have to revisit all the issues.
The options.
At least talk. I don't know what I mean. I mean, the deal may be off the table, by the way. That's what I mean, revisit all of our options, all of our.
Okay.
So it'd essentially be considering shifting everything back for him.
It's not going to fly. I can see it.
And he knows that.
Yeah. And by the way, just in all fairness, the issue that he's raising is an issue that he raised, and we were consistent in our response on that very issue, that, you know, I mean, you're asking for us to address ifs, and the ifs are all of you violating. So I mean, it's hard to create an agreement where you're trying to include in one agreement all the, if you don't meet these, then this, you know. So Kelly's approach, and I think Joe and I agreed 100%, is let's keep the agreement the agreement. We don't need to address every if.
Well, I think from what I've heard, talking to the DDA, not that we want to not pay Mr. Wackel for that.
No.
But there was no monetary value, like he didn't produce any receipts, he didn't.
Well, he doesn't know the number, you're correct. He does not know the number. The number should be known, but he claims he does not know it. So how can we put it in?
Correct. I think that was one of the concerns.
So do we think we have an answer from Dave before the DDA?
Yes.
Why don't we schedule a council meeting for the middle of the DDA meeting? They can meet with Dave, approve it, go into recess, we can open, we can meet, we can approve it, we can close, they can come out of recess.
That's what we were discussing exactly.
Is everybody good next Monday?
Yes.
Are you talking about if there are potential changes to the terms?
It's only if there's changes.
Yeah.
Okay. And we kind of know what the change is going to be, right?
Well, others look at calendars. How do we assess at this point? Is there a way for us to independently assess what monetary worth there is there?
Relatively close. He has received some contractors, I assume, contracts that he assigned to the underground work and water tap and did the tapping of the water mains. Some of those are canceled.
Well, this really, this really should be one of the easiest numbers, because this was all subcontracted work. So I don't understand why we don't, why we can't produce the number.
This work should already be done?
Yes.
The water main extension, underground stormwater attention.
Yeah, I mean, it's work that was subcontracted with paid invoices, so this shouldn't be a mystery to me, that's what I think.
I think he can hit the work, he just, there are the numbers, he just hasn't sat down and put them together to produce them. That's my speculation.
And wants an approval on agreement to pay without just telling.
Okay.
So I think the motion is appropriate, and maybe we could have a friendly amendment to the motion and suggest a meeting for next week if we need one.
Did you work the other side?
No, you're 7:00 PM, right?
Seven, yeah.
Would that be all right under your motion?
Yep, that's fine.
I wouldn't go to that, I wouldn't know.
Or a friendly amendment?
Right. In regard to the brick mason, do we know who, like, where they exchanged information? Do you know if it's the mason not getting back to him yet, or if it's all the way around?
I can find out real quick, Sarah, you know, me too.
Sure. But it doesn't affect the motion.
Correct. Right. Any other comments or questions from council? My mind, it may be more complex than what we are expecting, just to be meeting with a lawyer for the first time.
I agree.
So we'll see how that goes.
So.
Okay. We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Kemp?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Borjo?
Yes.
Alma?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item 9C is the Village Charter Discussion, and I know we've been talking about doing some comprehensive updates to the village charter, and it looks like Clerk Juanika is recommending that we remove the charter from the ordinance, which makes sense, so we would have a charter and we would have an ordinance, so we would have to, because the purpose is that we don't have to follow, well, not we don't follow all the steps of the ordinance, but it makes amending the charter more efficient, basically.
Two things. Number one, it should be removed, and we should move forward with that. Number two, I have a very comprehensive memo from the past with you about the procedures that have to be followed to amend the charter. We did a six, we did six amendments at an election, you know, not too long ago, and all of them passed, and there's a procedure that is not difficult, just a lot of steps. So what I'll do, when I saw this on the agenda, is I dusted that off and I'll reissue it, make sure that it remains applicable and it's up to date, and you'll be able to see the process for amending the charter. Having reviewed the charter in that scenario, you do have some things that could use some updating. And we recognized that in 2016, but, you know, amending the charter goes to the folks, and you just don't want to have too many issues before the folks amend the charter. So we'll work with the clerk and come up with a recommendation of the most pertinent changes that are needed.
Council, any questions?
No.
Yes, I was going to make a comment.
Yeah, absolutely.
I provided you with the cost. I thought that you should, it's not outrageously expensive, it's on the second page. And I also provided you with links that have information on home rule and general law villages, and why some of them choose to be in the charter as opposed not to. I did make some calls, but I'm in the middle of audit prep. The audit's going to start in two weeks, so I really haven't heard back from anybody, but so far, nobody's really been able to give me any reason to support it being in the ordinance, but it's regional, it's a regional thing. This region, there are a lot of villages and maybe some cities too, that have their charter embedded in their ordinance. But this would require an ordinance amendment, correct?
Yes.
So we would have to go through the first reading, second reading, publication, remove that. This also would require a recoplication of the ordinance, which I do once every year or every two years. This year, we really haven't had, we've had amendments to our ordinance, but that was to the zoning ordinance. The only general ordinance changes that we have had was to repeal ordinance 401 for marijuana, which, you know.
Was an easy one.
Yeah, and maybe it's not even an issue, because it's never really been caught by as an ordinance to then repeal it. But for the sake of tracking it in record, I would probably recommend doing that, because it did happen. And the other one will be the brake ordinance. Other than that, everything else has been a zoning ordinance. It is expensive to do a coplication, it is a rate of $18.94 per page, that's in front of you, images, graphics and tables are $10 each, but that doesn't change. That would be the same regardless of whether we pull that ordinance, the charter on the ordinance or not. It's just, you know, to consider the cost, there will be some expense associated with it, and then there will have to be corrections made to the ordinance in order to complete the stand, both documents standing alone, and, you know, having the correct table contents and correct supplements and so on and so forth. So it's really up to you, if you would like to proceed with that. I would think in bad can way on this, the first move would be to set a first reading for amendment of the ordinance.
For the removal of the charter from the ordinance, and then we'll visit whether or not you want to seek amendments to the charter.
So I'll make a motion to set a first reading for removal of the charter from the ordinance of Village Blacksburg. And is there anything more that we need in that?
I'll support.
Thank you.
There will have to be public hearing as well, but we just take care of that and housekeeping either first or second, depending on what fits with the publication and meeting dates, so I don't think that has to be part of the motion.
Thank you. Do you want a roll call on that?
Yes.
I would like a roll call.
Okay, please, thank you.
Hellman?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Borjo?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to 10 on the agenda, New Business. We have the Zoning Ordinance Amendment of the Single Family Residential District Building Height Modification, increasing from 25 feet to 30 feet per the Planning Commission Recommendation. I would move that we approve the second reading of the ordinance, section, amendment section 3.4.1.
Support.
Motion made by Cook, supported by Hellman. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Hellman?
Yes.
Borjo?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. 10B, this is the repealing ordinance 401, permitting adult use marijuana. This is a housekeeping matter, like I said at the last meeting. We do have an ordinance in place that does permit recreational marijuana facilities in the village, and so this is taking care of the opt-out prohibition that was in place prior to adoption of the last ordinance. So I would move that we approve the second reading of repealing ordinance 401, permitting adult use marijuana.
Support.
Motion made by Cook and supported by Kemp, I think I heard. And roll call vote for that, please. Ross?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Alma?
Yes.
Borjo?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is 10C, a parking lot lease extension at 72 South Washington. Mr. Mador, do you want to give us some background?
Yeah, and I remember, it was in 2018, I remember going over this with the attorney from the new, from Indian Valley for the new owners, and they acquired the property back then. They were just wanting to verify the parking and everything, that was original site plan was still valid and in place, and they could use it as it was stated. So pretty straightforward, they did that. Only recently, it was a couple months back now, they came and requested to extend it out. Don't know what the reasons are, maybe financing, maybe some partnership thing they had one on that they're in, I don't know. Didn't really seem to issue with it, share with Bob Davis, didn't seem to issue with it. The only issue we have is I had to make sure they had their insurance on file, because I don't think I had received it from the new owners. That's part of the lease agreement, that they were to provide insurance to the public area back there, and who do the village had additional insured, and they're in the process of giving it to me. Should have it tonight or tomorrow.
We also talked to them about some issues, we, you know, some garbage management issues that if we felt relevant to raise, while we were discussing.
Some of the neighbors that I talked to around there had some concerns.
Over time, there's been a, you know, more than a usual amount of complaints, so they were going to tighten that up. We put the burden on them to draft the amendment to the lease, they did so, and it's probably in order for consideration.
Any questions or comments from council?
I also had Joe Mador check, see if we're getting that dollar every year. I want my money. I actually think though, it might have been paid upfront, but they're going to check.
So maybe we'll get another $15 or something.
Yeah, so roll it into a seed.
We had that down.
Over time.
No, it came back.
Allison, come up 2022.
Come on, you don't want my dollar?
So there's no termination of the lease ability at all? Is there any?
There's termination within the lease document.
The original.
The original.
That's recorded here, the lease agreement?
Well, this only, this, the balance of the lease remains in place, this is just amending the term.
Right. I mean, it's for such a great time.
Yeah, I know, to me, it's got to be related to financing and or long-term, you know, money issues, so they're trying to make sure that they have the parking rights for as long as possible.
Is there any concern with the village needing to have this property not subject to a lease agreement?
I believe so. I mean, it's used for free public parking, and then it satisfies some of their parking needs, that the site plan needs as well.
We get free, we get public parking on this deal, which was our, which was our sort of benefit under the program.
They constructed the wall on the backside, which is a lot of.
They did all the work, and we got some public parking, and they got for their parking needs.
Thank you. I'd move to approve the first amendment to the parking lot lease for, what's that, 27?
72.
Sorry. 72 South Washington. Motion made by Cook and supported by Borjo.
I, perhaps I'm wrong. Isn't there a sign there saying like, no through traffic?
Yes. I don't know exactly what that's all about. I have to talk to Dan rather than, because it's public, it's a public throughway. So I think they may have just requested that, because people were working through there, maybe, I don't know. I don't, it wasn't this ownership that was there when I got here in 2017. I don't know if it was part of the site plan request or required, I could react, but I don't think it was required.
You're not wrong, there was a sign.
There's no through traffic. I got through there. I'm usually looking for specific things. I'm looking to see, like today, I wrote to them to see if there were drugs.
So you're conducting inspections?
Yes. I've never heard from the property owners of any issue with that. As a matter of fact, when the 2024, or M24 project came about, part of the site plan for this site, it required them to put in similar matching streetlights out front that matched the village lights in the area. They were staggered at a different, they were closer together, I believe, than they were on their light connections, well, their electrical connections, so they were coming in at a different time than our lights and things like that. So I did approach them in early part of 2020, end of 2019, to say would they donate those lights to us and allow us to take them over and incorporate them into our lighting scheme out front and be replaced, and they said sure, so they sent over those lights, and so they are now part of our light streetscape, connected to ours, so they come in and off at the same time as ours. So they've been good to work with.
Can we throw up a public parking sign on the same post that says go through?
Yeah, and perhaps, sometimes in downtown, there are some, I know, the DDA would years have talked about wayfinding signs, and now that the streetscape is done, maybe get some wayfinding signs for parking areas for parking. Perhaps we can even, you know, going down NC or Broadway, point down to there and indicate, make sure we indicate somehow, or that's free public parking. We could look at some signs there.
No, yeah, good.
Good points.
That's good.
Any other discussion?
Could you repeat the motion?
Yep. It was to approve the first amendment to the parking lot lease for 72 South Washington.
Is that the correct language, Bob?
Yeah.
The first amendment?
That's how they worded it, the lease, I thought stated on top of it.
Yeah, that's what they put on there. So that's the actual document. And we requested that they draft a first amendment, so that it didn't impact the balance of the lease.
No.
Any further discussion? Okay. Motion on the table, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any nay?
Well, yeah, this is another 12 bots, do we need to pick that up?
Well, my ass weren't in advance. My ass weren't in advance.
Next on the agenda at 10D is proposed resolution 2113 with MDA, annual permit authorization, so that we can basically use the right of way along M24.
Yep, she does it for like parades, Dan does it for work they may have to do, I do it for Vanna's and the bridge or other areas. We have to go through the Michigan permit gateway, and they're going to authorize you to go into that permit system and apply for those, and so it's just an annual reaffirmation approved of allowed.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution 2113 for the MDA annual permit authorization.
Support. Motion made by Helmut, supported by Ross, I think I heard.
Yes.
Roll call vote, please.
Ross?
Yes.
Borjo?
Yes.
Helmut?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes. Thank you, motion carries. Next up on the agenda is the lead copper rule water service line replacement bid recommendation.
Yes, and Mo reminded me today when she called me, wondering where the PO was, I referenced in my memo, and it was still sitting in my computer, so I sent it to you guys this afternoon, and I think I can clear the copy. Because the MDA PO, I had the addresses listed somewhere there. So in case anybody wanted to know where they were, and it also describes the type of material and the size of material. DPW and Sun is the contractor that we kind of stumbled into last year, that saved us a lot of money on all the lead service line replacements for the M24 project, when Dan's executing was around 7, 600, he was around 4, 300 on each of those, we saved a lot. Great customer owner, very conscientious, onsite every day with a couple of good workers, great to work with, very accommodating to the business owners or the property owners in many ways. And then Water Tap was the second bidder, again, something we've used many times, live tap in mains that have water leaks. They actually are the ones who did the live taps on our main stand in Verde for Mr. Weckel. I was surprised that someone of their, what they do is kind of out of their will health, I think a little bit on this smaller line service, but as you see, they were very competitive, only a hundred dollars difference per line. So I was pretty happy with either one of them, but Mr. The gentleman from DPW and Sun, that would be our recommendation, he is actually, I'm sure he's done it today, there was another water service line leaking into a basin right on 73 Dennison, we just found out last week. They were providing water, and then they were over to their old spade in that interim, but it was dripping into the basin right out along. So he was there today, Dave from DPW and Sun, to take care of that for us on an emergency basis. And yeah, we're happy with him, and we're hoping to get this done probably in the next 30, 40, 50 days.
Couple of questions, so the scope of work is from the curb stop to the water main or what about from the curb stop to the main?
This section that we're going to be in, our areas where there are already new mains with copper off to the water side.
Okay, so you're just going back and taking up the front yards.
Yep, yep. We're picking out some of the easy, short ones.
That's why the cost is so low.
Yes.
Honestly, because to do the whole thing, it's a lot more, right?
For instance, on the Hudson Street road project, the road to put together, that's the old main, which will have then the leads from the booth and that all that until the curb stop, then curb stop in. Now, one, certain part of Dennison, some of Dennison has newer mains, some have the old main, we believe one of them, being that today was an old section, so that was going to have to back through the main, but it was on the side of the main, it's close to the sidewalk. So Dan wasn't sure, but it did upgrade it positively either way, it's only going to be about a four-foot backbeat as well, if you have to back through the main.
And then, do we know with all these addresses, like what kind of landscaping may be impacted or if there's?
Don, Don has looked at all of them, and Dave from DPW has looked at all of them. I have not from real film. So, you know, some of them, they might look like, well, this is kind of going around the side and land here to minimize, you know, somebody doing nice landscaping or something. We know there'll be some sidewalks going through, we don't believe there's any driveway issues, but yeah, we will try to minimize that, but.
I noticed in the quote, it says, boring and rough grade restoration, and then it doesn't include any concrete dash valve replacement, so.
So that'll come through DPW in some cases, for the sidewalks.
Yeah.
And for like, when they did, like in front of the church, Holy Cross Church, down there, as well as that 24 last year, Dave from DPW had it rough graded, just rough, I mean, it's moved out of this fucking movement, and DPW would come by, grade it up to rates and maybe side, or seated, and straw it down.
That's nice.
So it just is a, it's sort of not their forte per se, digging and trenching and boring is what they do. So our guys are okay to do that, small sections here and there.
Other, any comments or questions?
So I'm sorry, so Water Tap?
They were 3,800 each.
So, but that does not necessarily, what was, I'm sorry, so there was something in their page, the first page that we received, I don't think we got page two or three, does that mean if that, if prices of materials change, that's not an exact quote?
His might have done like that, that's the first time he's bid something like that.
I'm sorry, just because I don't see two or, page two or three in our page.
Yeah, I don't think his, yeah, we're going to hold on to those prices. The only, the difference was, there was one point made, if the resident wants to upgrade to copper instead of the actual HDP plastic piping, they'll be responsible for the upgrade at a mature cost. Because we amended our ordinance script calling last fall to allow materials go from copper instead of copper for the plastic pipe to go in, but if not, not from the mains, the curb stop, when the curb stop is, so that's how these are being bid, if the homeowner wants to upgrade to copper, the homeowner will be responsible for that after cost. And there might have been something with Water Tap of materials, I don't think there's concern about the fluctuation of materials in the plastics versus the other copper, but these are our prices.
And this money is going to be paid out of the water fund?
Yes. Yeah, I think I have 80 or 85,000 in this year for water line replacements, and for whatever, what was this one, like 57,000 or something, none of these.
Do we qualify for any of the like grant, well, maybe not grant money, but there's some like loan forgiveness and a lot going on with the lead service line at all different levels?
I haven't heard of any lately that we would be. The ARPA funds, of course, we just got, they sent that out to you guys this afternoon, we just received the approval of that today.
And this is one of those state initiated programs where they didn't come for a lot of funds. So there are some grants, but we've been tracking nothing that has hit for us yet.
Do we know how much of the ARPA funds would leave us, yeah, we'll be able to spend on this?
You would be able to spend all that, Lee.
Oh, really? We won't have to, going to be different rules?
I think it was here for infrastructure.
No, but this category, this category of doing expenses, that's only.
Okay, good.
I think the better question, what else can you spend? I don't think we know that, not fully.
Right, no, not really. And.
We know you're a mom.
We have such a large need for these water lanes and mains and stuff over the next five, 10, 15 years, you could give all that ARPA money.
Right.
Is it worth us having a discussion about what we do with the funds or just?
Yeah, that will come to you guys. Now that we have the approval there today, and I've been working on a capital group plan for the water lanes and water mains throughout the village, now that we have our water line, the site was conducted and completed, I've got a roll order here this year, I have those dollar numbers for mains replacement, and then so much for each lead, and I have broken down around the whole village, that's why I can do that in the next month or two. All right, here's what we're looking at, you know, two and a half million dollars whatever for water line replacements over the next 15 years, and we get 380,000 in the ARPA funds, 371, I think it was. Good spot to target that.
So I know it's like that we could only use a certain percentage of it for infrastructure or something, right?
There are going to be some rules, but there's a couple more steps that have to be done before we get the money, and then the rules will be made very clear. You're asking a question everyone's asking, what do we do with our money? Or what can we do with our money?
And you got to make sure before you spend it, you want to get it in person, make sure you dot your i's across your t's.
Exactly. Terry, that's on you.
Yeah, well, the job well done, just getting the money, because that was more than one form.
Yes, the single BSS thing through the state, so now, instead of getting checks, now that we've set it up that big, from the ACH is the money, now our other money can come in that way too.
Yeah.
So that'll kind of help.
So decent amount of effort to get this in place.
And it's a capital group thing I've been working on, I'll provide it to you probably next month, see, here's all the streets, here's the areas where it shows, where we have mains replaced. We can pick off a lot of these short ones, like the Alberta Street, where the water main was, you wouldn't pick all these short ones in this range, but when it comes to a street, whether you've got the main and the long lead and the short lead, it's a lot more money. So, but we got to pick away a certain amount each year, so we got to neck off some of these shorter ones.
I've moved to approve the build manager award, the purchase order for the work of, but then the purchase order attached to DPW and Sun with their quota of 3,700 dollars per service line.
Support.
Any discussion on the motion? I'll do a roll call vote.
Cook?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Borjo?
Yes.
Helmut?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Next up is 10F, the Park Street Reclaiming Project, good results and recognition.
Oh, yeah, so, I think, and I, I guess this year, I, I believe. So unfortunately, we knew we were going towards the end of the summer, and we weren't sure how many bidders we were going to get, we were heading to go need to more time or manpower, but only three contractors picked up bid packs from, picked them up from Roe, only one turned one in. Local Birmingham Seal Co., I knew they were going to bid, they told me they were going to bid, and they did. I called him today and told him what our recommendation was for, for my discussion with Roe and myself, and what we were going to recommend to council tonight, and although he might be disappointed a little bit, he understands, I mean, because we only had so much budgeted, and this is, you know, 27,000 higher. He believes that he threw the bid, it's hard to go after to get it, so he thought he has a really good bid in there, and he thinks maybe our engineers estimate it was just on the low side, because of material costs, most of them. But Roe just believes that perhaps if we rolled this smaller project in with the Hudson Street project, which is, you know, 480,000 versus 80, we get some, A, there'll be a better timeframe for more contractors to look at it to the winter time and prepare for a spring job and go after it. And more contractors and more who have made some larger equipment that may have crushing capabilities for Birmingham to have to pay, pay equipment and not crushing equipment, which Park Street required. So a couple of factors played into that, and we, Paul O'Meara knows, are guys who we're working with, he just believes we'll, we'll do this good or better by rolling it into the other one.
We reserve the right to reject, so I think they might want to consider, in any motion, rejecting all bids, even though it's just a reject all bids.
And, you know, we could find out that his bid was a good one next spring, that if someone was breaking this cost, we might find out, yep, he was fine out last year, we could have had done it last fall. We'll have to kind of say 2020, that one, that's it. If council chose, say, you know what, no, we want this done this year, it's a local guy, it's 20 grand more, yeah, so there, you could do it, we would have to amend the budget.
This money would, I think, be, this work would qualify under the funding, I'm pretty sure.
The ARPA funding?
Yeah.
I was going to say, it's the one thing that won't qualify.
I don't know.
I don't really say, although I put ARPA, anything but, yeah.
That's a fair.
Is it, but I don't know.
But I wouldn't, I wouldn't go out on any limb to say that, I think we'd pay for this ARPA.
I wouldn't do it, but I mean, it might be it.
Here's a question, will we have the road torn off? Are we going to do their water leads?
There's no water lead down there.
There are, huh?
You're not connected to the water system?
Those who are, already have leads stubbed out when they did that loop.
Okay.
And all the little ones are new on the south side, they all have to be proud. There isn't any water lead work to do west of Jersey, what that company. There's a couple of them around as well still, but they had the lead stubbed over, but then it's up to them to run their own lead from the curb stop in. There's no lead copper rule work, come in there to do.
Do we have the money somewhere, because what I remember is this was a tight squeeze anyway?
It was tight squeeze on the local road fund. It was going to, pretty much have to have the local road fund, this is the local road first. Then when you add the extra half metal to the mileage rate that brought in, you know, little bit more money, like 6,000, a ton of more money. So you kind of ride, Peter, pay Paul, but you could do it.
Did, did their bidding, I can't remember if there was something about shoulder or the water drainage that wasn't going to be included in the bid, is it?
There's no engineering, like storm drains, additional storm drainage or anything like that. There is a, the way that design from Roe is to address and get the proper crown and addressing the sloping, there's already catch facing the over and then the south side, then to catch the water, and I think that's all been addressed as good as it could be, because it's not a curving of the road. To kind of maintain the crown on it, so the water from the south side doesn't all then end up in the, in the north side, which is, which can really show deep front yards and stuff. So the main concern was to try to keep the crown on the road good, so water in the north stays in the north, water in the south stays in the south, and if it's a channel that it should be.
So that is exactly what they asked for?
Pretty much, yes.
Are there any further safety issues or concern letting it go into the winter?
I don't think so. I mean, the concern that we heard about was about a plowing concern and therefore, I don't think there's any issue with people driving, getting down the road, it's plumpy. And there's a little lip on that one, that one particular driveway where there is ducts down as a lip, if you were to plow it downward, you wouldn't catch the lip and you'd be fine, you'd have to plow it off, or they could even come up and do it a little bit differently. That particular part was in the right of way, it was going to be dressed and repaved about four feet off the road surface, and that would eliminate that issue with those other soft spots and holes and stuff in the old road that obviously won't be getting any better with the winter. But I don't think, and it would lose a car either.
If I remember correctly, the driveway that was brought to our attention was an elderly couple, can't shovel their own driveway, haves to have it plowed, and they couldn't get it plowed.
That's what we were told, yes, but I, when I done it, I looked at it done, if you, you couldn't plow it, you just plowed it differently, and it's more difficult to do.
So absolute worst case scenario, they can't have it plowed. Do we send, is there any issue with sending one of our trucks to do it?
Yes.
I just, I guess, I realize that obviously that people have been playing favorites, I just don't want to leave them in a position where.
Typically, people like to plow down the driveway and across the road, which they're not supposed to do.
Yes.
But that's almost how it works exclusively everywhere, into the city, and the, out in the country. If they were to plow theirs downward, they wouldn't have that catching of the drop off, there's like a drop off lip like two or three inches of the black copper, it's kind of something.
Probably not, they're going to hit it.
Probably not, they're going to hit it. They're coming up a hill onto the road, yeah, they would catch that, and that's a problem, you can't come and let your blade fall all of a sudden, get over. They don't want to push it down, push it into the front yard or up to the drives, but they could, they could push it, or they could backblade it up with blade facing the other way as they come up. Difficult.
So we're not just leaving them stranded?
Yeah, I, I think.
Or you take.
Somebody could, somebody could figure out what, they're not going to, I'd be hard pressed to say that they would have to live without a, an untowed driveway.
Okay. That was my main concern.
Yeah, and yeah, just, it's a driveway, no matter what, it's pretty steep, so ice, rain, whatever down there is.
I thought the issue was they wanted to have their driver redone, and nobody could redo it until.
That could be part of it too.
I think it was actually their driveway.
Now they reset that idea.
So it's not getting stuck, it's wanting to improve and unable to do that. that to the...
The plumbing wasn't one of the issues, so I'm gonna call that. So, yeah, that might be one or two. But again, as we addressed it, the part that worked, where it was kind of sunk, was still in the right of way, the approach area, so we were going to address that in this project. And any other ones in that road that were, you know, similar, not the one on the south side, because they're all new. It might have one of the driveways a little bit, uh, that's the road paper out.
And it's just so far over, I'm sure.
And, and the county contractor that's, I'm sorry, the contractor that bid on it, um, he said, what, is there something in the, in the purchasing, local benefits and stuff? I couldn't remember the numbers off that man if we got to check them for you guys. There, if someone's in a, 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 a village resident, you could go like ten percent above the little bit. And then a county resident, a county contractor, I think it was like a five percent above the bid. There was a couple things we had built into your purchasing policies, a lot of...
There was littler order, a little bit anyways, for local.
I think we're just going to motion.
I'm sorry.
Oh, she did.
John!
Can we just, I'm gonna assume that you'll reach out to her and chat with her nicely and say, we're not just ignoring you, but...
Okay, 'cause I didn't know what the motion was approved, and I, so I didn't...
Reject, reject.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I, I, I absolutely agree.
And, and it's just too high over, but we don't have it in the budget.
Yes.
We don't have that.
We have to land it and pull the funds out and stuff.
I'll reach out to, um, I know the woman who requested it, it's her, her parents own the property and they're renting it to someone else. And so they're getting a lot of complaints from tenants.
I've never since been great, I can tell.
So, yeah.
I gotta write my cell phone.
She'll ring and come in.
No, that's fine.
Well, yeah, we're, we're, I don't know if we need to do the same thing, but we definitely need to address the end of the spring.
If, if we roll right into the, um, Dennis, the Hudson Street project...
Which is...
Which is in the budget. We're hoping to, you know, the, the, if, if, and swap plans over the middle of October, middle of April. Who would like to see that money expert by the first of May, middle of May next year, the Hudson Street project would be in this budget. So this will be done in the third quarter, the second quarter of this year, maybe done in the fourth quarter of this, this year.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on the motion? So the motion by Forjoe, supported by Cook. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion carried. Okay, ten G. This is a DDA request for scarecrow festival banner on the Palliant Trail. So we would need enforcement, enforcement, people for the DDA.
And this was something I brought up to the planning commission a couple months ago, when we were, I think it was the evening we were talking about the, the additional height for the single family homes. Because it's listed in our ordinance as one of the prohibited signs. And I told them that and I did everything, essentially, language wise. And I talked about how we accommodate making it no longer prohibited sign, but that open to everything. So we want to, if we were to address it, we wanna address it to, it's only for like village or DDA type events or something like that. We just don't wanna banner up there fifty-two weeks a year. M D A controls it.
Yeah, we're gonna look at the, the language, because these, these ongoing moratoriums doesn't make a lot of sense. And that already restricts you from allowing it to be private advertisement. So you're already halfway down the right row. And we could somehow have some exception, I, I, I don't necessarily think you wanna banner up there twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. But maybe have some windows of opportunity for village and DDA to sponsor or to put a sign up there for village...
Promoting the downtown or promoting...
Promoting an event. And put some time restrictions and some maximum durations that signs can be up each year. We're, we're, we're just starting to look at it. We don't know, we haven't looked at the legalities or the constitutionality of that type, type of sign and restriction, but we're looking at it. It's not before you concede.
Yay, 'cause I didn't like it.
No, I know.
I just, I automatically started seeing, the election's coming up, so it's gonna want some up there for the election. Christmas is coming, the girlfriend lock up, the, the odd man with his twenty bears.
That's what we were, that started initial, this question, or, oh, was that, you know, you could end up with a ban, just a banner at, at every moment, and that's not what we're looking for.
Palliant Trail, the council did approve...
Yeah.
Until mid-January, I think they gave us approval, and then they'd like us to come back with whatever ordinance is. But, yeah, they, again, don't want it turning into...
Yeah, a, a banner of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
They didn't want us to put, uh, them on our insurance.
Yeah.
So we just need a rule for that, that not, that's still...
Palliant Trail has approved it, I didn't, I didn't mean that hard to manage, lots of road, yes.
There's a probably get approval from Palliant Trail, so you just think, you just think you do the subjective motion.
Counsel just need to approve us to, to violate our ordinance by, by mortem placement against...
Gotcha. Okay, so I'll move to approve moratorium of enforcement of section seven four seven, item five of the village zoning ordinance that prohibits banners on the Palliant Trail Bridge and allow the DDA banner for the scarecrow festival from October first through October twenty-four.
Actually, I said, the, trying to figure out a way to put that in there, because that's number twenty-three, it's the last one listed.
B through B.
Support.
And, uh, that permit gateway and that doesn't, and, um, they do three week, I don't know if that makes sense.
Um, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nay?
Nay.
When they come up? Motion carried. Okay, um, item eleven on the agenda, our items removed from consent agenda, which are done. And we have another opportunity for public comments. Are there any, um, public who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move to committee reports. Let's go to, um, councilperson Forjoe for a nota.
Um, there are, uh, update, we're still looking into, what, what is, is my W, what do we need? Um, in becoming a, I forgot what is the number, is it, uh, I talked about it last time, about, uh, so that we can get some budgeted money when the transportation act comes due in the coming, probably in twenty twenty-four. And I want to make sure we're, is able to be a part of that rather than, it really being swallowed up by other transportation companies such as Sire. So we are still, we've been working on that. That's the main change, I think.
Thank you. DDA, Ross?
So many good things with the DDA. Okay, so, couple of events coming up. If anyone's available, Thursday, February the 10th, we have a pop-up market with concerts on the twenty-third of this month. Scarecrow Festival is slated for October seventeenth. Um, I think I said this last time, but I just can't remember, so forgive me, but there is a new gift card program that we'll be launching for the holidays that, um, that this can buy into, and you can buy an Oxford, or Village of Oxford gift card and shop that, shops in the village, all with one gift card. So, nice little gift option, which I think is a great idea. But there's lots happening as always, so check it out.
Thank you. Palliant Trail, Cook?
Uh, the trail approved the chamber of commerce request to put lights on the bridge again this year for Christmas, um, as well as there is an Eagle Scout going to put up appliances around the catch basin and the black and permission, whatnots.
Great, thank you. Um, planning commission and cable commission, Melon?
The planning commission, Matt, it was last Tuesday. Who had had to make the recommendation, the guy in the building height, for the principal building that you saw today? What was that?
Just making fun of my daddy, I'm reading, sorry.
It seems like there was something else on that agenda.
You had that quick discussion about something else.
What was it?
Oh, some marijuana, um, applications.
Can I have to site check with you?
We are gonna be seeing a lot of site plans. I think five site plans. I'm hoping it's gonna be scratch and stuff. We're, they handed out packets for the marijuana review, so we know what we're looking at, what the process is. We got the applications. So we're just waiting to see that everybody gets to the process, so we can get the site plans to get started. And then the cable commission had, uh, the remaining, I think in a week, and we expect to get a three-year budget outlook for the cable commission like we've done here. And they're reviewing all of their assets, so they can see what kind of purchases, capital purchases, they might have to make in the next couple of years, so we can do better about the DDA.
Great, thank you. Okay, manager staff and attorney reports, Mr. Woodmore?
Nope, I'm good. Stand for the... I'm good, thank you.
Or Cunningham? I'm living in, else, Chief Solwell, anything?
Uh, I'm ready, you guys covering it off, thank you.
Great, thank you. Council comments? Anyone want to start?
I'll say, thank you all, always, for being wonderful at Excel School.
Ross?
Just a quick question, are we streaming? I know we had talked about meeting streaming.
Terry and Joseph from OC TV came out and they looked at the, what the needs were for their wire. We told them to get the wire provided to James, our, and then he would run that along with the internet wire, and I don't think they've gotten that piece of wire yet. That's for rent, we done it, I think. Because he said, if they give them the wire, he'll run and he runs ours, if they wanted the wire to that.
Okay. Forjoe?
Sorry, I'm late. I haven't searched the time, I'll get on there. I, because when we started the first day of this new job today and, you know, waiting for the car, we're sharing the car right now, it's a little bit cold. Uh, a couple, maybe a month or so. I have really nothing else, so I, I've been more involved with the, the DDA events, I've been, been really amazing, um, great to see. Our sub had the, what we call the OLA Day, the fireworks, thank you for the approval on that, it was an amazing event. All day long, the entire sub came together. Next year, I wanna make sure to invite you all earlier, so you can come out and see all this, it's just a really cool event. Truly brought our area together, it just keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger and it's, um, it's really cool to be able to see a small subdivision in the area do something like that and, um, come together and wait, you know, get rid of all the drama that comes in areas like that, so.
Yep, um, that's it. Thank you. Thank you, Melon?
I did, I wrote notes on my house back and that's it at home, 'cause I've been home that. I do, Joe Dorr got right back to me about the possibility of a chemical problem with the water plant, I don't know if you guys also those emails. I was very glad we worked in New Baltimore that day. I did appreciate them getting back to me so fast. I pretty much liked the answer that we got. I still think it's a very scary thing to even think about. But I, I don't know, I guess I'm getting old. I'm getting old people, I can't remember what went down.
I just wanna clarify that she, that there wasn't a potential water at our plant, she was just according about our problems, what we thought about it, so. We didn't have a potential problem, she just wondered and that...
I know, she nearly almost had a big problem.
She wanted assurance to say...